Okay, because I just wanted to know if sometimes when Reyes comes out here, he wants to sit over here.
Oh, really?
Because he wants to be closer to the public side.
Oh, I see.
They're following the usual form of comments.
Public comment first or we'll do it last?
Oh, okay. Good evening and welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 16th, 2013. This is a special meeting of the Public Works Committee. I'm Councilmember Joe Buscagno, Committee Chair. I'd like to welcome my colleague, Councilmember Mitch Englander from the 12th District, who will be joining us this evening pursuant to Council Rule 74. I've called this meeting tonight to discuss our broken streets. Los Angeles has the worst streets in the country. Nearly one-third of city streets are so badly damaged, the Bureau of Street Services can no longer maintain them because low-cost, routine maintenance is not effective and reconstruction is too costly for a city facing a multimillion-dollar budget deficit. The price tag to fix 8,700 lane miles failed streets is a staggering $3 billion. Unfortunately, we're already paying for it. Our cars depreciate value quicker, we get hit with more repair bills, our tires wear out faster, and we burn through more gas by sending in more traffic. All this adds up to $750 in additional vehicle operating costs every year, and when you factor in loss of time and productivity, it's $1,500 a year. Our local streets form the skeleton of our transportation infrastructure and allowing them to continue to deteriorate is simply not an option. In January, my colleague, Councilmember Englander, and I proposed a bond measure that would finance the reconstruction of all 8,700 lane miles of failed streets in a 10-year period. I've asked officials from the Bureau of Street Services to come this evening and give an overview of the problem and answer questions. The city administrative officer and chief legislative analyst have prepared a preliminary analysis of the bond measure, and I invited them here this evening to present their report. This report and all communication to this committee on the matter will be available online at lacouncilfile.com under CF number 13-1300-S1. Tonight is going to be an informational meeting only. Before giving instructions to city staff on how we proceed, I want to hear from you. It's great to be here in the Valley, Van Nuys City Hall. Residents, neighborhood councils, and business owners are all invited and encouraged to weigh in. Following tonight's meeting, I'll hold meetings in West Los Angeles, East LA, as well as South Los Angeles to allow residents in those areas to share their questions, comments, and recommendations. The meeting schedule is also posted on my website, l15.com, as well as Councilmember Englander's website.
CD12.org.
CD12.org. The city of Los Angeles is no stranger to large infrastructure projects. A hundred years ago, the Los Angeles Aqueduct opened, which allowed a small town to grow into the second-largest city in the nation. We have risen to the occasion before and we'll do it again. I'd like to now turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Englander, for his opening remarks.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hosting these series of roundtables and workshops citywide to get stakeholder input. I think it's critically important. As I've been going out and meeting with a lot of neighbors and stakeholders, friends, neighborhood councils, business organizations, chambers, and the like, I've been hearing a lot of pushback and a lot of folks saying, "Don't raise our taxes. We already pay. We've been paying into the system for far too long. There's so many other things we need to do first to ensure that we can restore accountability and trust in the local government, and it's just another tax increase that we can't trust to go into the dark hole of the general fund." You've got to lower your voice when you say "the dark hole of the general fund."
(laughing)
It's a requirement. It's part of the charter. But in any event, I think it's important to have a historic perspective on where we're at today and how we got here and why we're here. Why is it $3 billion? Why is it a 60-year backlog? And what can we do to catch up? So historically, if I can go over that for just a moment, going back about 20 years, the city didn't have a system. And Mr. Salcedo, our general manager here, will go through that a little bit, but we didn't have the system in place to measure the streets. The technology wasn't there to figure out what streets are in what types of condition, what maintenance requirements were needed. The technology for slurry seal and other advancements in material and the aggregate and the combination of what we're doing now didn't exist as well. So you would essentially wait for a street to have a complete failure, and then you would replace the street. That is an antiquated and outdated system. And what happened was from 1950 to about 1990, the city didn't put enough money into repairing streets because essentially it was supposed to come out of the gas tax. Now, the gas tax money that everybody pays into, just so you know, is a depleting revenue stream, and the reason it is is because the amount of gas tax that you pay is actually based on the gallon. It's not based on the price. And that formula hasn't really changed. It's been manipulated over the years, but in essence, it really hasn't changed in all that time. So roughly, we pay right now about 36 cents per gallon for gas tax, 36 cents per gallon. Right off the top, half of that, around 18 cents, goes to the federal government. Where that goes, I don't know, but it goes to the federal government somewhere in Washington, DC. And a good portion of the balance of that goes to the state government for highways and bridges and other infrastructure. Another portion goes to the county, and the city of Los Angeles nets around 3 cents a gallon. That hasn't changed in 50 years, the formula. So with that, cars over the last 50 years are getting much better mileage with hybrids and other types of vehicles, certainly a lot better than they were 20 and 30 years ago, where they're getting 30 and 40 and oftentimes 50 miles a gallon now and carpooling and other things. But with that, the maintenance wasn't put forth for that entire period of time. So we've inherited, as the newest council members on the city council, Mr. Buscagno and I inherited this backlog of 60 years. Now, with that, the pavement preservation system, which was put in place in the early 90s, started measuring all of the city streets. It's roughly 28,000 lane miles of streets. That's enough to drive from here to Paris, France. 28,000 lane miles. 8,700, about 31% are in failed D or F condition. That's the size of Oakland, three times in failed condition, in poor condition, that needs to be replaced or repaired and not just maintained. So with that, the cost of the maintenance is roughly anywhere between, per mile, anywhere between $400,000 and 2.5 million for full replacement of those failed streets. To slurry seal a street for just the rough maintenance runs about $26,000 a mile, and on a repair on a street is about $325,000 a mile. So that's where you come up to $3 billion. Now, with that, 20 years ago, the city council put forth an initiative to put on the ballot and ran no campaign, did no public outreach, and the worst part of it is we didn't have neighborhood councils 20 years ago. We now have an active, organized electorate who cares and weighs into these issues, and I thank all of you for being here. So with that, 20 years ago, the estimate to fix all the backlog of the streets was $700,000, 20 years ago. Fast forward 10 years after that, where that's when I came into the picture, is the Chief of Staff for then-Councilman Greg Smith, who was then the Chair of Public Works.
Of course, right.
We did an update, working with Street Services. It was the general manager at the time, Bill Robertson. We did an update to find out what it would cost to repair and fix all the streets, to bring them into good condition, so then we can maintain them in perpetuity. And the cost at that point, 10 years ago, was $1.5 billion because of the material costs that have gone up, because of the labor costs that have gone up, because of regulatory environment that has also gone up, because of a lot of other things that go into repairing streets and repaving streets and replacing those streets with the reengineering of left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes, the fiber network underneath it for the pads, for the ADSEC system, all the things in the infrastructure that has gone into the streets, that too has gone up. So now we're at roughly $1.5 billion 10 years ago, and there was no political will to even bring the discussion forward, quite frankly. There was a lot of push for it to even have the discussion on the council, but there were a lot of other initiatives, competing politics, that trumped the issue at the time, and so it was sort of put on the back burner, if you will, although we continue to plug away at it. I will tell you, as a council member and as a former Chief of Staff, and Mr. Buscagno, who represents San Pedro and Watts and that area, I represent the northwest San Fernando Valley, which is Chatsworth, Northridge, Grata Hills, Porter Ranch, that area, they couldn't be further apart geographically. I mean, they're different hemispheres. And with that, they're different climates, in fact. And in fact, the chairman got his shots just to come out to the valley tonight, so we're all safe.[627.32][627.32](laughing) But with that...
I had to change my watch as well.
Yeah, it took a time, two hours.
It's a different time zone. But with that, we have a lot of common interest and a lot of the same common concerns and common complaints. And what I find fascinating is the number-one consistent complaint that we get in our office, in every council office, and I say "consistent" because we certainly have hot-button issues that people call up about, development projects and the like, but the most consistent complaint that we get that affects every single Angelino, every single day, is the conditions of our streets. And so we went and wanted the study updated, and it came out to $3 billion. Here we are 10 years later, so in essence, it's gone up double every 10 years. And the chairman and I went and met with Professor Lemire at UCLA, and we went to him and said, "If you had a blank piece of paper, if you said you were just going to start in the city of Los Angeles today, if you were mayor for a day, if you will, if you had a magic wand, what's the one thing that you would do, one thing that you would do in the city of Los Angeles?" And he wrote a white paper on it, and we've got that on our website, and it's published. And it says basically, in an essence, that he would put forth a bond to fix every single street in the city of Los Angeles because it's got a direct return on investment, because the people who would pay for it would see the savings in their automobile costs and overhead, that they would get, the value of their property would go up, goods movement, transportation movement, public safety. And without going through all the details, and you can read that on your own, talked about why it would be a good investment to fix all of our streets. So a bond is what we've come up with, and we wanted to get your input on it. And the idea of this bond is that it wouldn't go into the general fund at all. In fact, we'd have no control over the funds whatsoever. It would go into a special assessment fund that would only be utilized to fix these streets. They would do it in 10 years. At the curve or at the apex, if you will, of the repayment plan, the highest part of that plan would be in year 10, when in fact, the project would be completed and all the streets would be fixed. So with that, I appreciate, we've pulled this back, we put it out there, we pulled it back quickly because there was some bark and some bite right behind that bark and said, "You know, we've got to do some public outreach. We've got to meet with stakeholders. This is big. We need your input. We don't want to make these decisions unilaterally, and the decision before us is only whether we put it before you to put it on the ballot. It's not simply to pass it on our own." And so I really do appreciate that you've taken the leadership as the chairman of this committee, and you're doing the public outreach, and I appreciate the time you've given me for my opening as well.
Thanks, Mitch. Thanks for your partnership on this. Thanks for that report. I think we can dive into public comment now. No, just kidding.[806.13][806.13](laughing) I like to bring up, what we're going to do is we're going to have presentations from the city staff, and then we're going to open up to public comment. Please be sure to fill out a speaker card if you haven't done so yet, and Officer Johnson's here. If you could hand your speaker card to Officer Johnson, and we'll get to public comment after the presentations.
And by the way, just to correct myself, I believe I said $700,000 20 years ago, $700 million, so it's doubled.
Yes.
Staff this text, David.
So with that, Eric Villanueva is here, Representative City Clerk's Office. Thank you, sir, for being here. If you can read both items, and we'll take items one and two together. Thank you.
Item number one is a verbal report from the Bureau of Street Services relative to the condition of city streets, street repair and maintenance, and future capital improvements. Item number two is a city administrative officer and chief legislative analyst joint report relative to the Los Angeles emergency, local street safety, and traffic improvement measure as initiated by motion Buscagno and Englander.
Thank you, Mr. Villanueva. Let's bring up Nazario Salcedo. He's the Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Come up and give us an overview on the condition of our street system, the street repair and maintenance. And Nazario, I'll start off with a few questions, then I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Englander. Include in your overview an explanation of slurry seal, what slurry seal is, and what's the cost per mile? How long has this technique been around? When did the city first use it? Also, explain the difference between slurry seal, resurfacing, and reconstruction, and the different costs associated with each of the maintenance of our streets here. And why does slurry seal and resurfacing no longer work on a failed street? With that, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, Nazario.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmembers Buscagno and Councilmember Englander. First and foremost, I want to thank you both for your constant and incessant leadership on all matters related to public works, but specifically, I want to thank you for bringing this critical issue to light. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about one of my favorite topics, streets, you know, and I'll try to do that in a way that I simplify my presentation, avoiding technical terminology and using engineering terms that could be a little bit complicated. Let's start by defining the city of LA as an entity. Without a doubt, the city of Los Angeles is the largest municipality in the nation in terms of geographic area. LA is comprised of approximately 475 square miles of territory. I mean, within the city of LA, we can house the cities of Milwaukee, San Francisco, Minneapolis, Pittsburgh, Boston, St. Louis, Cleveland, and Manhattan. So that gives you an idea of how big the city of LA is. We can squeeze eight major cities within the city of LA. Interestingly enough, the cities that I mentioned have an NFL team and we don't.
Oh, no.
But of course, that's a different topic. That's a different topic.
We're getting there.
In terms of public works infrastructure, the city of LA has the privilege of having the largest public works infrastructure in the nation and arguably in the world. No other city in our country has more sewers, more streetlights, more trees, more sidewalks, and of course, more streets. But today, we're here to talk about streets, and without a doubt, we have the largest and most congested municipal street system in the nation and arguably in the world. 6,500 centerline miles of streets. Okay, just so we can fully understand the term "centerline miles," if you measure, for example, Van Nuys Boulevard between Victory and Sherman Way, there's a mile between Victory and Sherman Way. If you measure using the center of the street, that's one mile of, one centerline mile between Victory and Sherman Way. In addition of 6,500 centerline miles of streets, now we can say that the city of LA has 28,000 lane miles. Now picture the same Van Nuys Boulevard between Victory Boulevard and Sherman Way. If you have six lanes, now you have six lane miles of streets, of street between Victory and Sherman Way. So once again, summarizing, we have 6,500 centerline miles of streets and 28,000 lane miles of streets. Now, you mentioned, Councilmember Englander, you gave us an analogy of our street system, the magnitude of our street system. Indeed, our street system is equivalent to a four-lane freeway between LA and Rome. It's equivalent to a 10-lane freeway between the cities of New York and Los Angeles. And actually, the equatorial circumference of Planet Earth is 26,000 miles, so we could easily go around Planet Earth, you know, with our street system. That's the magnitude of the challenge that we have here in LA. Now, the street system was not always this big. The reality is, prior to 1945, the city of LA only had 2,500 centerline miles of streets. It was right after the war when the city grew in exponential proportions. The Valley immediately became a very attractive housing area, and we went from having 2,500 centerline miles of streets to 6,500 centerline miles of streets. You also mentioned, Councilmember Englander, that we didn't have an idea of what we had. It was until 1982, when the Bureau of Street Services put together the first inventory of streets in LA. So we didn't know that we had approximately 70,000 city blocks in LA. We didn't know what to do with all this pavement. We didn't have an idea about the condition of the pavement. So in 1982, the Bureau of Street Services created the first inventory of streets. At that time, we decided to inspect each one of the different 70,000 city blocks that we have, and we used to use a methodology called, in the industry, a windshield survey. Basically, we would drive the street and determine, "Hey, Mike, what do you think on this block from 0 to 10? What score do you want to give to the street? Well, I feel that it's in good shape, so let's give it an 8." And even when this was a good methodology at that time, because we didn't have the technology, this methodology was not good for us to manage the street network. And when I say "manage" is determining exactly what work to do, the type of work to do, and when to do the work. And we didn't have that information in 1982. It was until 1998, when the Bureau of Street Services decided to move away from the visual type of methodology to a more scientific kind of methodology. And in 1998, we officially adopted MicroPaver. MicroPaver is considered the elite pavement management system in the world. I've had the privilege, and I've been very fortunate, to visit some of the most advanced municipalities in the world, and the city of LA uses, like those municipalities, Paris, London, they use MicroPaver. So MicroPaver, without a doubt, is the tool that we needed to determine where we were, where we are, and where we're going. So in terms of inspections, since the adoption of MicroPaver, the Bureau of Street Services inspects the condition of every LA street in a three-year cycle. Basically, every three years, we determine the condition of the streets. Our information is readily available on our website, bss.lacd.org. You can go to our website to determine, to see the maps. Every neighborhood council is there, so you can click on your neighborhood council and see the condition of the streets for each one of your neighborhood councils. The way we collect the information is by utilizing the state-of-the-art van that is equipped with high-definition cameras, laser technology that measures the roughness of the road, and based on this information, we rate the street between 0, for a completely failed pavement, to 100 for a pavement that we, for a street that we resurfaced today. Once again, having MicroPaver gives us the ability to know the existing condition of the streets, know what to do, how to maximize the existing level of funding, how to, you know, which kind of maintenance or rehabilitation process we need to apply, and when to do Once we adopted MicroPaver, we decided to publish our condition of the streets in the city of LA. It was in 2005 when we released the first state-of-the-street study. At that time, as you mentioned, Councilmember Englander, we needed a certain amount of money to bring the street network from where, you know, where we were to where we want it to be. In 2008, we released the second state-of-the-street study, and at that time, we determined that we needed approximately, and I'm going to say a big number, $2 billion to take the street from the existing condition, the average pavement condition index of 62, to the optimum of 80. Most recently, in 2011, in October of 2011, we released the 2011 version of the state of the streets. The latest report shows that 31% of our pavements are in failed or near-failed condition, meaning that they require reconstruction, which is without a doubt the most expensive rehabilitation process that we can apply to a street. Overall, the state of the streets determine that 21% of our streets are in good condition, 23% are in satisfactory condition, 18% are in fair condition, 13% are in poor condition, and 25% are in failed condition. So when you combine the D and the F, the poor and the failed, we have approximately 31% of our total area, street area, requires reconstruction. Now, the key to a successful pavement management operation is to determine, to determine exactly when to apply the right type of work that will avoid the street from deteriorating more, because the more the street deteriorates, the more you need to spend in the future. Currently, the Bureau of Street Services applies, the pavement preservation program of the Bureau of Street Services is subdivided into two categories, maintenance and rehabilitation. Maintenance entails parco repairing, slurry sealing, and the definition of slurry sealing, per your request, Councilmember Buscagno. Slurry sealing is a very cost-effective maintenance technique in which we apply 1/8 of an emulsion to a street that is in fair or good condition to extend the serviceable life of that street, to keep that street in that condition for the next seven to 10 years. This is a very inexpensive maintenance technique because we only spend approximately between $25,000 and $30,000 per mile.
How much are we budgeting every fiscal year for slurry sealing?
Right now, our current budget covers 455 miles of slurry sealing during this fiscal year, which is a historical fiscal year, by the way. Last year, we were able to complete 747 miles of pavement preservation, and this year, we're on our way to complete 800 miles of pavement preservation. Now, when the streets no longer qualify for slurry, the streets now require rehabilitation. When we resurface streets, we resurface streets at a rate of approximately $350,000 per mile, and that is the second line of defense, resurfacing. We should try to avoid best management practices, solid pavement management fundamentals will tell you, "Don't wait until the street requires reconstruction because it'll cost you five to seven times more." A mile of reconstruction can go from $650,000 per mile to $800,000 per mile. But the question that we always get is, "Okay, Nazario, you're doing a monumental job. You're telling me that you are maintaining the average pavement condition index of the network on 62, which is fair, but how did we get in this mess? I mean, what happened? At what point, the city network failed?" Well, as I mentioned before, prior to 1945, the street network was comprised of only 2,500 miles of streets. And back in those days, the budget, the allocation for resurfacing was for 50 miles of resurfacing. So if you divide 2,500 miles of streets by 50 miles per year, we had a life expectancy or a resurfacing cycle, if you want to call them like that, of once every 50 years. Not the best resurfacing cycle, but not so bad either. But after 1945, when the city expanded and grew in exponential proportions and it went to 6,500 centerline miles of streets, guess what? We never adjusted our resurfacing program. We continued on a trend of 50 miles of resurfacing per year. So if you divide 6,500 miles by 50, we were paving streets once every 130 years, which obviously didn't make any sense. But the reality is, I don't want to blame our predecessors, I don't want to blame our grandparents, simply because they didn't have the technology that we have today. I mean, back in those days, I want to think that they did the best they could, given the resources and the technology that they had. But today, we have the most sophisticated technology, we know where we were, we know where we are, and we know what's going to happen if we don't act immediately. So I think we have a moral responsibility to at least try to do something about it because our gift to our kids and our grandchildren will be their streets. That's the reality of things.
Thank you, Nazario. Thank you, Nazario. I'll turn it over to Mr. Englander for questions.
Well, I do want to hear a lot from the public on this, but before we jump into that real quick, and looking at that, can you tell us, are any of the funds, there are some additional funds, I believe, besides general fund dollars and gas tax dollars, and it's being supplanted more and more every year with general fund dollars, which was never the intent for maintaining streets, I realize that. Could you shed some light on other revenue streams that we still have or are now gone, and walk us through that?
See, that's an excellent question, Councilman. The sources of funding are pretty much fluctuating, coming today, and they're gone tomorrow. Historically, our main source of funding has been Prop C, which is money that is coming from MTA, from the state, and one of the restrictions that we have with Prop C funding is that we can only use that money on streets that have buses on them. So, it's not like I can take this money and use it on residential streets, because residential streets do not have buses. So, there's a restriction there. We also get federal funding. Recently, we got, for example, we had ARRA funding, American Recovery and American Recovery and American--
Investment Act.
Reinvestment and Recovery Act. And we were getting funds from the federal government. We got approximately $45 million that we spent in the lapse of three years. Again, that money came with restrictions. That money could only be used on what is called federally designated streets. So, these were collectors and arterials. We couldn't use this money on residential streets where we know that is where the need is. We use gas tax, as you mentioned, that's been our main source of funding. Unfortunately, we keep hearing that gas tax in the future will be decreasing. So, that's one of the challenges that we have. General fund, we used to get a lot of general fund in the old days, but we no longer get general fund. General fund is one of those sources of funding that we can use anywhere. Major streets, arterial streets, collector streets, and of course, residential streets. So, right now, the bigger challenge is, what are we going to do in the next couple of years if all these sources of funding are being decreased by the state and the federal government? Luckily, most recently, we are using now Measure R money, and we have approximately an allocation of $10 million per year, which is going to be our main source of funding for the next decade or for the next 20 years.
Okay, so just how I understand it, the $10 million is strictly for, for the most part, maintenance, because it sounds like we've got, over the next 10 years, roughly a $300 million problem a year, just in the backlog of the streets that are in the 31% that you articulated, that were in near-failed, excuse me, or failed condition. Is that correct?
That is correct. Currently, we get approximately $110 million for our pavement preservation program. Again, 455 miles of slurry, 100 miles of cracked sealing, 255 miles of resurfacing, and the repairing of 350,000 particles throughout the city. That's money to sustain the condition of the street network the way it is right now. We are investing very little money on reconstructing streets. In reality, we're only investing money to reconstruct, to address 145 lane miles of D streets and F streets, which is not enough. The reality is, we have 8,700 miles of Ds and Fs, and if you divide 8,700 by 145, that's what we do every year, we have a backlog of 60 years, like you mentioned earlier, Councilman.
My last question is, if we do nothing, and continue to do what we've been doing or what we continue to do, and the funds aren't simply there, because a lot of people have stated, if we fix all the other problems in Los Angeles, if we rein in our pension programs, if we cut back on programs that aren't core functions and all of those things, again, from the numbers that you've just articulated, we're looking at $100 million, or, I'm sorry, $300 million shortfall, $300 million shortfall, and just fixing the backlog, that doesn't include what we're already putting in $100 million a year in the maintenance that we're currently putting in some planting out of the general fund. Is that correct?
That is an excellent way to put it, because right now, we're using $105 million, but that is, that money is to maintain the streets in fair, good, and excellent condition, but we're not addressing the Ds and the Fs.
Okay, so the ones that fall in, you just narrowed it on one more thing, and this will be my last question. I get really excited on this. This is fascinating to me. On the ones that are in D condition, since we're not maintaining those, and you had shared earlier that the cost of a repair versus a reconstruct, a repair is roughly $340,000, $320,000 to $340,000 per lane mile for a repair. Reconstruction is anywhere between $650,000 and $2.5 million, depending on the street, per mile for major replacement. If that's the case, the ones that are in those near-failed condition, once it goes into the failed condition, it could, in essence, double, if not quadruple, the cost of repairing it, and if we're not touching those in the D condition, and those continue to slip into F-conditioned streets, that number grows proportionally, exponentially, if you will. So, in essence, if we continue to just study this for the next three, four, or five years, we're going to be at $4, $5, $6 billion if that, if we're continuing on that same trajectory. Is that correct?
That is correct, and this is not a linear projection, but every three years, we need an additional $1.5 billion. That's the reality. The cost of aggregate, the cost of oil, and the cost of the labor in general increases almost $1.5 billion every three years.
Because it's a petroleum-based process.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salceda, for that comprehensive report. I'd like to bring up now our chief legislative analyst, Mr. Jerry Miller, and he will be joined by Ms. Natalie Brill from our CAO's office. If you can have you both come to the table and provide us with a summary of your report, and we'll start with Mr. Miller.
Good evening. I will be brief. I know that you do want to hear from the public on this. We did prepare a joint report, my office and the CAO's office, on looking at the proposal. We stepped back and looked at a variety of funding, potential funding mechanisms, and essentially evaluated, but we viewed to be really the whole menu of potential options. I think we're clearly here to say today that it would appear that certainly the most viable option would be a general obligation bond. Now, as you heard from Street Services--
Can you explain what a GO bond is?
Sure. Voter-approved, it's got to be approved by a 2/3 vote of the electorate. It's an ad valorem tax, which means it's based on the value of property. Now, that is the only financing mechanism that the city can use that is value-based. We are precluded by law from doing any other value-based taxes. There are other potential mechanisms that we outline in the report, such as parcel tax, special assessments, which are now very, very difficult to do under Prop 218 Melrose, which is very viable for new developments, but it's very difficult to do in built-out areas, and I can explain some of the details why, but for a whole variety of reasons. Certainly, the most viable is GO. I think it's important to note also that, and I didn't say this in previous meetings, but one of the things that we are going to need to talk about going forward is the city's track record on our general obligation bond programs. We are actually working with engineering and are going to bring forward to your committee a report on all of those. And on the police program, the fire program, the library program, the animal facilities program, every single one of those programs was delivered on time and under budget.
What do you test to the success of these bond programs? What do you attribute, rather, to the success of these bond programs?
Excellent property management, great participation by the public in being able to find the projects and move those along in the various communities, and past experience. The city many years ago did not have a very good reputation for delivering programs, but certainly, over the last 20 years, all of the programs that we have delivered have been on time and under budget, and we've added projects. So, for a variety of reasons, I think that the GO bond is the most viable source of funding. It's going to be essential to stress, as both councilmembers mentioned, and as Nazario indicated, that funding to maintain the streets going forward is going to be essential. We need to find a way of not only meeting our current levels, but increasing those, and we need to recognize that in 10 years, when this program is over, when everything is brought up to A to C, when all of the Ds and Fs are gone, we're going to have to plan for and recognize we're going to have to continue to make the investments so that we don't end up back in the same place that we are today. So, that's an overview of the report, and I don't know, Natalie, if you wanted to add anything more on the debt stuff?
Okay.
If I could, and just real quickly and briefly, you'd stated that there's been a tremendous success in the previous track record of the city of Los Angeles in their bond efforts, and you attribute that to good management of the funds. Have the, has the mayor or the council, previous councils, been able to reprogram or reutilize those funds, those bond program dollars for other programs in the city or for general fund dollars? Can they offset that? Can they control any of those funds?
They can, for a variety of reasons. One, under the law, it can only be used for the specified purpose, and it can only be used for capital expenditures. It can't be used for police or firefighters, it can't be used for operating costs, it can only be used for capital expenditures.
Okay, and did those, any of those have citizen oversight committees?
They now all have citizen oversight committees, and they all have internal oversight committees as well.
And is there an audit of those funds separately?
There's an annual audit every year, yes.
Okay. And Natalie, thank you for joining us as well. From your experience in looking at this as the expert, why would be a good time to look at a bond now in terms of, I don't know where municipal interest rates are, you know, why would this be perhaps the direction we should consider, and why at this time?
Natalie Brill, CAO's office. Currently, municipal interest rates are low. A lot of people are not in the marketplace. General obligation bonds are the best credit of the city, and the reason is because it is backed by the full faith and credit of our ability to tax property. And we know that citizens of Los Angeles pay their property tax upwards of 98% to 99%. We have very good citizenship. They pay their property taxes, so it's viewed very favorably, which means that there's less risk to bondholders, which means the interest rates are very good.
Now, one of the things, and you bring up another point, that I'm sure we're going to hear from a lot of the speakers in a minute, is why should property tax go up? Why should we, why should property owners have to pay when they already pay property taxes? And other people besides homeowners drive on our streets, and it's not perhaps equitable. In looking at that, are these only homeowners when we talk about property owners?
It's all properties. Commercial property, residential property, industrial property, everybody pays property tax.
Multifamily, are they?
Correct. Now, this is an additional tax. It's also the, the reason you issue bonds in general, the whole philosophy, is that you're issuing over time because you're using them over time. For example, wastewater, your sewer system, right? You're not going to replace the sewer system for, you know, $1 billion today, because you're not the only ones using it. So, over time, everybody's using the sewer system. Well, you can make the same argument for the streets. The reason you issue debt and you pay for it over time is because you're using it over time. That's one of the philosophies behind bonding in general. A general obligation bonds, the way that they're calculated, they're calculated on the assessed value of your home. So, if you have an average home of approximately $350,000, you would pay about $121 over the life of the bond. That's the average.
That's the average. So, wouldn't start off at that level?
No. The first year would be $24.
Right.
The fifth year, $113.
Go on a curve.
Correct. You were right when you said the 10th year would be $209.
So, that would be the A tax.
Right.
Okay.
So, the amount of bonds that we've paid off, the $3 billion we've paid off over 29 years, and so each property owner, the average of $350,000, would pay about $3,500 over the life of the bond.
Over the life of the bond, although--
Of 29 years.
That return on investment from the savings of automobile maintenance, as Mr. Buscano pointed out, as well as property values, would be appreciated as well.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
I might also add, in terms of, you know, people already paying property tax, that's certainly true, but for the public's knowledge, the city only sees about 30 cents on the dollar. 70 cents of every dollar of property tax goes to the school district and to the county. So, all of that money does not come to the city.
So, Natalie, you know, as Mr. Englander alluded to earlier, we hear from residents that we're taxed this, taxed that, and, but my question to you, and for the record, why can't, or is it possible to repair every single failed street using funds in our existing budget?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, no, it is not possible. 70% of our general fund budget goes, in essence, to fund police officers, firefighters, and the clerical support that they need, otherwise you've got sworn officers performing civilian duties, and for equipment. So, basically, that leaves 30% of the general fund left for everything else the city does, and we simply do not have the money. It isn't there, there are no projections that indicate that it's going to be there. Now, going forward, as I said, on the maintenance issue, we're going to have to accept the fact that we're going to have to use general fund money to keep these streets up to the proper level, but we are so far behind right now that it is simply impossible to imagine $3 billion to get our streets where they need to be.
Very good. Questions? We're good? Well, thank you so much for that comprehensive report. We will now take public comment, but before we get into public comment, I want to welcome the president of the Board of Public Works, Madam President, Capri Maddox, to come forward and say a few words. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for being here.
Hello, how are you, Councilwoman Buscano, our chairperson? I'd like to also acknowledge Councilmember Englander. I am the president of the Board of Public Works, and actually, I wanted to turn around just for a second to thank the folks from the Valley community. Looks like, I think, we have about 50 people here, which is more than pretty much all of these meetings combined, so thank you so much.
Welcome to the Valley, so to speak.
Yeah, that's how you guys roll.
That's right.
And I see a couple of friendly faces from my past. I see Joanne and a couple of our friends. I also wanted to thank Councilman Englander. You are an advocate for your community, and there's a little bit of distance between City Hall and the Valley areas, but I don't think any of the needs of your community are lost in the transit. So, just thank you so much for all you do. The other thing I really wanted to do is also thank both of you for, like, taking on an issue, not advocating for any position, but I just think it's really important to thank you for, you know, not putting your heads in the sand and at least trying to figure out a way to deal with this problem. I know you've heard from Nazario Salceda from our office, he's done a wonderful job in the Street Services team. They paved, I believe, this year, they're actually going to pave 800 miles. And I wonder what's that distance between those two states, Nazario? Those states, you think you said somewhere between, like, 800 miles is like from Los Angeles to, like, New York or one of those salt lakes? Right, Oregon. So, we went straight up. So, I mean, it's just a wonderful accomplishment, and they do more with less every year. I also wanted to give thanks to our other bureau heads, but you do so much with so little, and I really appreciate your service. And I just want to let you know, councilmembers, that I'm here to answer any additional questions that you may have, and I know we're going to take public comment, and I think it's better for us to get into public comment so we can actually hear from the folks that are behind us that have been waiting so patiently. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for being here, and thank you also, your board as well, for their continued service to our city. And I want to echo Ms. Maddox's comments. It's great to see a number of people here from the Valley represented, and, you know, our goal here is to have a transparent process of moving forward with this bold idea and this opportunity to fix every failed street in the city. So, with that, we're going to do a two-minute public comment, and I'd like to welcome Chuck Betts to the mic, followed by Robin Tyler and Deborah Francisco. If you can make your way to the mic, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. Property owners do not create the problem, and neither did you two councilmen. So, we're the only ones who are going to pay for this, and not all property owners are going to pay for it either. There are only two groups of property owners who will pay for it, and that is the homeowners and the rental housing providers, because the rental housing providers cannot pass this through, because we have a thing in Los Angeles where these people are protected with rent control, and this cannot be passed through to the tenants. And we constantly, in the rental housing industry, keep getting hit with more and more things that we cannot pass-- more things that we cannot pass through. And if we do a capital improvement, we can only pass through half, but if the capital improvement is more than $10,000, we have to do other mandatory work on our properties. The tenants won't pay, pay this, and back in the 1970s, there were 12, there were 12 tenants to every property owner. The tenants use the streets more than we do. If there's only one adult in that apartment unit, and they're driving a car, in every unit, there's 12 to every owner, and we're not going to be able to pass that through. Business is not going to pay this tax either, because business will add it into the price of the product and put a profit margin on top of it. So business will make money off of this. So I think we need to change some things in this city to make everybody responsible to pay their fair share. And as was said, the gas-
Finish your thought.
The gas tax, the gas tax revenue is going down because of the new technology. We're not using as many gallons.
Thank you.
And so therefore, the share of the property owners are going to have to pay is going to have to go up.
Thank you very much, sir. Robin Tyler, representing the North Hills West Neighborhood Council.
Hello, how are you?
Good, ma'am. Thanks for being here. She'll be followed by Deborah Francisco.
It was a great presentation, and I'm not, I'm 100% in agreement with you. We need new streets, and we need new sidewalks. I'm the Vice President of North Hills West Neighborhood Council, and in my area, I'm one of the better-off people. I'm very fortunate. I'm 71. I'm working, next year I'll retire my corporation, but I've worked all these years. And when I moved into my acre, I paid, I don't know, $3,000, $4,000 in utilities. My utilities today are $14,000. $14,000. And Mr. Pickle came out and talked to Vank and told us that utilities are going to double in 10 years, and I'm one of the well-off ones. Now, when you tell us things like, and I believe you've done the study, that it'll only cost $21 or whatever, I double, you know, I right away make it to $100, so for me, maybe $10,000 in 10 years. And I could probably squeeze it out and afford it. But I have to tell you something. In my neighborhood, most of the property owners, a lot of them are retired, and they don't have the money, and they're being squeezed. They're being squeezed by utilities. They're being, you know, DWP was out at my house and said they were going to work on Saturday because they get paid, they get paid time and a half on Saturday, and I told them not to come back. So it's not a matter of we don't want to do it. It's not a matter that you're not picking up somebody else's problem. You are. But thank God for Proposition 13, for homeowners, not for commercial businesses, but for homeowners, because without that, I see a lot of people in my area that would have to move out of their houses. They don't trust it'll stay that low, and they just can't afford it because they're being squeezed. So it's not that they're against it. We really like Councilman Englander, and he does, we do. I like you. And you do great for our area, and you're a fiscal conservative, and we know you're looking for wherever you can get this money, but it's very hard to squeeze property owners because they're scared. They're scared. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Deborah Francisco, she'll be followed by Donna Garcetti, then Miriam Folger.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for listening to us. I'm representing the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. My name is Deborah Francisco, and we, as a council, have put in our vote for opposition for this bill. Not that we don't like you, Councilman Englander, we love you out here, but we just can't approve it at this time because we want to see a straight across-the-board tax for everyone. We want to make sure that it's homeowners, business owners, apartment dwellers, everyone. And as they have said, with the rent protection, it may not pass on to them. So currently, that is our position with the council, and after everything is heard and changes are made, we may change our position, but currently, that is our position for opposition, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, ma'am. Right, thank you. Donna Garcetti, please.
That's me. I noticed Eric Garcetti, who's done on the slip, is not over here, so. Anyway, the biggest problem we got over here is that the property owners are really being overloaded with a lot of taxes, and it really makes me mad that all over the years, I realize Busciano and Englander didn't cause a problem, the normal amount of money being spent, being wasted with the CRA, and now, now all of a sudden, we don't have any, any money, so, and you can't just squeeze it out of the homeowners. And I just know that many of the people who are on such an eight, they'll probably never end up paying for these, even though they go on the same streets as the homeowners go on. So you don't have any indication that everybody will be used uniformly. And I don't even know if we even know exactly, or will even hear, which streets are being done, whether these streets are being maintenance, or whether these streets are going to get total redone, and who's going to choose where exactly how this technology, how that's going to be done. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I don't even trust the city council that these dens can even be done in a fair and a way, good manner. We don't know if some neighborhoods will get more. And this is why they closed down the Van Nuys video conferencing so that people can't speak on these items. So I'm glad you're here. I wish you would be able to come here. I wish we can open up every day to have our things up anyway. So anyway, we can't just totally have it on the tax. So that's why we need our video conferencing back in Van Nuys. Everybody, we used to have it every day, but they took it away. So anyway, we-
Thank you.
Yeah. We can't have it on the-
Thank you, Ms. Garcetti. Ms. Folger, please. Ms. Folger will be followed by Lloyd Francis, if you can make your way up, please. Glenn Bailey and Bob Blando, please. Blando.
I want to tell you, Mr. Englander, you were one of the ones that spearheaded the closure of Van Nuys, the Van Nuys video conferencing, which is right here, folks. For folks who want to know why.
Please stick to the item first.
I'm talking about that right now. The fact is, we're talking about a bond here. If this is brought before city council for a vote or to put on the ballot, we won't be able to speak on it very readily accessible because they denied our right to speak on video conferencing, speaking on this kind of matter. Okay? This is a very important thing for the San Fernando Valley, to have a right to be heard on this issue because it's going to affect us very much.
Speak on the bond, please. Speak on the bond.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Folger.
Yeah. Well, anyway, the CRA, Community Development, took all the money away from the city, and you know, they have a big deficit from it, from all these projects that they did, and they, of course, they neglected our streets, and they shut off our video conferencing so they can keep us quiet here in the San Fernando Valley. And it's obvious right here, folks-
Speak on Items 1 and 2, please. Items 1 and 2. Speak on Items 1 and 2.
You want to pass this on to people and tax this out of a home without representation because the fact is, we don't know what kind of work you're going to be doing on the streets. Things are going so slow here in the city. I've seen other projects, other, the things that you proposed, and it should be across the board, not just a few homeowners, not just the homeowners and apartment owners. It should be across the board. Everybody should be putting in for this, and it should be, they should have accountability. And where the money is, it should be in one account, not being transferred to other accounts and lost in the shuffle. And I feel that this is the only way I can get this mainly across, having this video conferencing open so that we can make sure that you're doing this bond correctly.
Okay, Mr. Francis, please. Lloyd Francis, followed by Glenn Bailey, if you can make your way up. Good evening.
Good evening. I am against this bond issue because of the fact that you're only going to be paying for it by property owners. Why is it that you only want to target property owners? Why not everybody who drives on the streets? Is it because you can't find a way to collect it? Did you answer that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Part of public comment is, is no direct dialogue. It's, we're all ears, sir. This is why we're here.
Well, the comment is, is that you're sticking it to property owners because you cannot find a way to make everybody pay, and it's not fair. We keep getting bond issues put on the ballot, and it's going to pass on the ballot because the people who aren't going to have to pay are going to vote yes because they're going to benefit, and they're not going to have to pay.
Thank you, sir. Glenn?
Yeah, point of, just for a point of clarification. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before, and I know a lot of folks are probably going to come up and say a lot of the same things. So when you do, just so you know, one of the reasons we've decided to do and pull this back and have a community outreach and stakeholder meetings for at least a year and a half, which is what we're planning on doing this, is to get input on, looking at, we're not wed to any one direction, any one particular way or vehicle to get there, just to present the idea and some of the solutions. The CLA and CAA report recommended a number of different revenue streams that we could look at, as was articulated by Mr. Miller as well earlier. So I just wanted to share that again, that there isn't something that's now being placed on the ballot. There isn't one particular thing that we've locked in on that we're narrowing in on, or even if we move forward, the idea is to get your input and ideas, not just the concern, but suggestions as well, and we're all ears. So I just wanted to share that again. Thanks.
Thank you. Glenn Bailey?
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for bringing your Public Works Committee to the San Fernando Valley and to Van Nuys City Hall in particular. First of all, I just wanted to point out that the city council voted to ask the city attorney to draft the language for the proposed ordinance be placed on the ballot. So unless you're going to, which I hope you will do, is to take the public input and hopefully, as a result of that public input, change your instructions to city attorney. That's what I would hope you would be doing as part of this process. It seems to me that the action council took on January 15th was premature to ask that the city attorney draft that ordinance until you've heard from us. Secondly, given the fact that over 60% of the voters in Council District 12 and 3 and 7 in the San Fernando Valley, and I believe in 15, too, rejected a tax increase, that was the measure A for sales tax, I suspect that this will be similar to be rejected, at least in those council districts. So I think you really need to think more about this. I have a couple of points, and that is, one, the Oversight Committee, as far as I can tell, I get all the city notifications, I haven't found any Oversight Committees of any of the bond measures, except for the committee that's comprised of the CAO, the CLA, and the mayor's representative. There is no citizen amongst those, and we need those citizens, and we need neighborhood council representatives on the Oversight. We need to find a way to charge the people, the operators, like DWP trucks and LA DOT buses that do a lot of damage to our streets. I know it's our money that pay them, but they are damaging our streets. We need to take that money out of their budget then, if they're causing that damage. You can easily do that. And secondly, the property taxes, I'm glad that you're talking about the $3,500 that it will cost the property owner and not just the 33 cents per day, because that's really what the people need to know before they vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Blando, Bob will be followed by Joanne Yovanick, Bill Ratner, and Paul Hatfield. So Bob, please, thank you.
Thank you. I'm in Councilman Englander's district. I live in West Hills, and I just want to have a couple of comments and questions about and suggestions for the Public Works Department with respect to the maps. It's very difficult to tell from the maps what is failed streets and what is nearly failed streets. In my own neighborhood, my street isn't in either one of them, but every street in my neighborhood tract that was built 40 years ago is marked red, and I don't know whether those are failed or not failed. Okay? Secondly, oh, I have a question regarding your micro, what's it called? Micropaver analysis. I'm just wondering if the micropaver analysis results are also compared to the work history or the pothole repair history, street-by-street basis, to see whether or not it correlates to what the micropaver has to say about the condition of the streets? Because I think that that's another way that we can determine which streets need the repair work more than others. Thirdly, I'd like to suggest that the plan for repairing all the streets be stretched out. It's, 10 years is too short a time to try to get all that together. And thirdly, on the bond, or actually, on the bond portion, or the financing portion of it, you mentioned that we pay 36 cents a gallon in fuel taxes, but we also pay 36 cents a gallon in state sales tax, which I don't know where that goes, but it goes to the general fund and does not come back to the street and the wire and the street. And I really think that what we ought to do is replace that with a tax on the vehicles, such as a city tax on vehicles, a vehicle tax, that will cover the cost of reconstruction of all our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, welcome.
Joanne Yovanick-Garb, West Hills Neighborhood Council, although today I'm private citizen Joanne. Actually, I'm in favor of the project because we do need to do something about our streets, our sidewalks, and our trees. I'm just not sure about the payment options. So that's where my hesitation comes out. Also, I'd like to see a tight rein on the committee, and Glenn stole my thunder, when I, I think there should be an active citizens oversight committee with neighborhood council people represented, and probably for the four different districts of neighborhood council. Since there's 40% of the citizens live, of the city of Los Angeles live in the Valley, I think we should have an equal number of representation. I'd also like to see, if they are going to do this work, coordination between the DWP and the sanitation department, because nothing beats, gets you madder than seeing a freshly paved street being torn up for sewer construction. And then they never put the street back to where it's supposed to be, and so that, I'd like to see more coordination. I know with, how's the Department of Transportation going to keep up with this? They pay, they redid Shoup Avenue. It took seven months to get the street painted. So we were sitting there with no lines on the street for almost seven months. And I think that we really should think this through a little more carefully and talk about other payment options. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bill Ratner, please, followed by Paul Hatfield.
Yes, good evening. I also want to thank the councilmen for putting this in the Valley. As the Secretary to the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, I have a general question on developing risk reduction plans to make sure that costs are contained, the schedule is maintained, and there's some type of triage plan done so we get the costs out earlier for the development of the streets that are in worse shape, just like you would do in a regular hospital situation. So if we put our money where it will do the most good sooner, you might very well see a lot of the public work towards supporting this endeavor. I know from my work on Survey LA as a volunteer speaker, there are over 884,000 parcels that haven't even been inventoried yet, so heaven forbid we mess up on the street inventory. So I agree with making sure that you've catalogued things right to make sure that the risk reduction plans on how you approach this. And then a financial risk reduction plan also. This is a 10-year project. Guess what? You may not be here in 10 years with the limitations on the ability to hold an office, and so the accountability really starts with developing the plan so that they will continue in your absence, and that would also increase public awareness and public support. And there's an old saying, tax, don't tax me, don't tax him, tax the person behind the tree. We need to be careful how we approach who is really paying it and what do they really get for the value of their money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like to invite you to speak at our neighborhood council sometime so we could create a speaker's forum for this issue. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you for your service to the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council. But Paul Hatfield, please. Paul will be followed by Cheryl High, if she can come on up, Jose Ortega, and Sid Gold, if you can make your way to the podium. Paul Hatfield?
Yes, I'm with Neighborhood Council Valley Village. I'm the treasurer.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. It's interesting. I think you indicated that we pay something like $700 a year in car repairs, in additional car repairs because of our streets' conditions. In other words, what you're telling us, that we've been paying a hidden tax on our cars all these years with nothing to show for it. And I could tell you that if I ever charged a client $700 with nothing to show for it, I wouldn't have very many clients. So by asking us to pay an additional tax, that's like throwing salt on the wounds, I should say asphalt on the wounds, because you, before you do that, and I realize that we're talking about $3 billion just for streets and another billion just for sidewalks- we're talking about $3 billion just for streets and other billion just for sidewalks, that kind of money, yes, eventually, we are going to have to resort to some kind of financing scheme. But to ask us to do that, to even propose that we do that, without you guys first doing your job to rein in compensation and benefit costs of the city, some of the savings of which could be used to help fund, if not the repairs, at least the servicing of the streets, is really a slap in the face. So, I would say, before you go, one more step on this, you guys ought to prove what you can do on the compensation and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl High, Cheryl, followed by Jose Ortega, if Jose can make his way up.
Good evening. My comments pertain to the maintenance funding. Your proposed street bond measure creates no maintenance fund, only the anticipation that there will be sufficient funds in the annual city budget to maintain streets in a satisfactory condition thereafter. Those words come from your materials. Given the city's track record has put us into this position, the testimony that we've heard today with regard to a very tenuous and fluctuating ability to get money out of the general fund for maintenance, this is a very naive assumption. There needs to be a mechanism similar to a condominium reserve study, where on a regular basis, funds are established and set aside for the future maintenance needs, and those funds cannot be used for any other purpose other than maintenance. I thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I thank you for your interest in a very important topic.
Thank you, ma'am. Jose Ortega, followed by Sid Gold. Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am in Mr. Englander's district. I live in Porter Ranch. There's no question that we need the project, but the big concern on my part is why should homeowners, property owners, have to pay the entire bill? I think if you're going to push that, you ought to have an independent study on it that's available to the public to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid Gold, followed by Karen Williams. Karen, if you can make your way up, please, and Jill Banks, please make your way up.
Thank you, Sid Gold. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I'm also on the Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council.
Thank you for your service.
Couple of things I want to make comment, then I might ask a question. I'm sure you don't have the answer, but it was always pointed out, why should we have confidence in a city council to manage this project? We heard, I don't want to blame our grandparents or our, from the street workers, but here's the city council that's been sitting on this problem for how many years? 30, 40 years now? We're going to address it? What have the people at the city council have been doing in the past? So, why should we have confidence? You talk about oversight. Why should we have confidence in that? We saw what happened in the city college district, we saw what happened at LAUSD with that money. Why should we have confidence? Where is the backbone here for the, from the city council that ensure that the money will be spent properly? My other question is, you mentioned how much it costs per mile to pay, but how much of that is for labor, and how much is that for materials? Who's going to be building these roads? Going to be city workers, or is it going to be by contract? I think we need a breakdown of the costs per mile, not just the number, $300,000. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karen Williams, followed by Jill Banks Barod.
Hi, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good, hi. I actually, my family were fourth generation in the valley, and soon, fifth generation. Been here, seen these streets falling apart. It's very sad, I have to say. I was very excited to see Mr. Englander's, which is not, sorry, Biscagiano, when they had announced that the bond was to be coming out, and within an hour, it was withdrawn because of the north, the neighborhood councils. Now, neighborhood councils, I would wish to banish totally. And now, apparently, they're asking for more funding. I would be totally against that. These are people who say no to everything, which they immediately did. You backtracked within an hour, there was a retraction that, nope, okay, we're taking it off the ballot, we're not going to have it. Well, you know, I've tried to speak at the council meetings, I've actually had the microphone grabbed from my hand. I'm not, I've been yelled at, screamed at, doesn't matter what I have to say, it doesn't matter. As far as taxes, you have to pay taxes if you want to have a good city, and I want to have a good city. I was born and raised here. I'm in the same home that I was actually born and raised in. So, you know, and you want to talk about how much your electricity bill was, well, our house cost $14,000. Things didn't, you know, don't really cost the same as what they used to. Things really do go up, and if we want to turn this into Oregon, which doesn't pay taxes, you're going to have streets that look like Oregon, you're going to have fire departments that look like Oregon, you're going to have, and they have the lowest tax rate. So, you know what? I don't know if anybody is saying that they love taxes, but yeah, I do, okay? I want our cities to be beautiful again. I was born, raised here, okay?
Thank you. Jill Banks, please, followed by Sharon Brewer.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here.
Council members, Biscagiano and Mitch Englander, and thank you again for coming to the valley. My name is Jill Banks Barod, and I'm president of the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council, but I'm here tonight representing the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, which is the oldest and largest alliance in the city. We represent all 34 neighborhood councils in the valley. My first thought that I want to share with you, and I've been directed by VAG to say this, there is another hearing going on tonight, at this moment, same time, in the valley, and so, neighborhood council people have to decide which ones they want to go to or shuffle back and forth. And that's, the Planning Department is having a scoping meeting now on the mobility project. So, I would ask respectfully that in the future, you coordinate with the city Planning Department and not have your hearings on the same, the same night and the same time. As you know, or I hope you know, that I've invited both of you to come to our next VAG meeting to speak, because we really do want to hear, I know what you, your arguments, and have a discussion with us about this measure. But what I wanted to share with you is what, some of the thoughts that our members raised last week, and that is, once again, the city is turning to the homeowners for another tax. And I think at some point, the homeowners and the voters are going to say enough is enough. And also, there doesn't seem to be trust of how the money will be spent. You know, several years ago, we had the trash tax/fee, and we were told that if we, if we paid tax on that, we would get more police and police stations. We're still waiting, and it's not here. So...
So, finish your thought.
Finish my thought.
Finish your thought.
If I can hear myself. Yeah, so, I think there really is no confidence in whether the money will be used the way you say it will be, and those are the, those are the concerns that we have. But I hope that you will both come to our VAG meeting, and we can have a full discussion on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Brewer, followed by Paul Castro. Paul will be followed by Carolyn Cassavan.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. I have some questions that I hope somebody can answer, or that you can think about, and it's about sharing the cost. Does the city pay property tax? If not, why not? How much road damage is caused by city vehicles, sanitation, street services, LAFD, et cetera? Before going forward, I think that a report should be done by each council district detailing the number of property owners, possible revenue generated, and lane miles with D or F categories within each district. Then, they should maybe look at keeping the money generated by that council district within their council district to fix the roads. What about people who don't own property or live in the city but drive on the city streets? What about dirt haulers, semis, et cetera, large vehicles? According to the report, the CAO/CLA report, page 8, it says, "Road damage caused by trucks and buses, axle weight on pavement. Truck carrying 10 times weight of car does 1,000 times more damage to the road as a single passenger vehicle." Will the tax change as property values changes, and what is the real formula for figuring tax? I think you need to go and research this, and hopefully, go and address some of these issues, because the property owners are tired of being hit with everything, and you need to spread the costs to everybody who uses the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Castro.
Hello. First, I'd like to thank the Public Works Commission for properly ignoring public records requests. We appreciate that. The hiding of information is great. And the city attorney's office could have probably returned this measure to you if they weren't still illegally furloughed. I hope the city council addressed that. As far as the bond measure, the 1911 Act makes the property owner responsible for the repair of the sidewalks. Service cuts from water and power and other agencies are probably the largest cause of damage to our streets. And the question is, who's going to perform this work? That's really not addressed. The $9 million in resurfacing that you guys had for the valley, that project was stopped. It was stopped because you tried to go around the public unions. You need to work with the public sector workers. That's it.
Thank you. Carolyn Cassavan, she'll be followed by Ernie Holger?
Hilger.
Hilger, and Barry Seibert.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for being here.
I'm here representing myself as a resident, but I'm also on the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council.
Thank you. Very sure of this.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say, first of all, I think we, we need some kind of bond measure in order to address the issues with our streets and sidewalks. But right now, property owners are really, there are two parcel tax measures under consideration, one at the city and one at the county, and I think we need to start looking at, what is a fair way to apportion the costs? And so, I'd like to see that addressed moving forward, and this is a really good time for us to think about what percentage of the costs for these kinds of things go to the property owners? How can multi-tenant property owners, how can we enable them to pass through costs to their tenants? 50% of the people in Los Angeles are renters, and I think it's important for us to look at how we can address renters. And then, we, in addition to commercial and private property owners, we also have public property owners that include the state and federal, as well as the city. And so, we need to look at how we address their share of the cost for this, and that maybe comes from a different pot of money. And then, I, and I think then, looking at the people who use the roads, and looking at our auto registration, our vehicle registration fees, and gas taxes, in order to address, really, everybody paying their fair share of the costs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ernie Holger, please.
Good evening, Councilman Englander and Councilmember Biscagiano.
Evening. Thanks for being here.
All right. Opposition, my subject of this little letter is opposition to CF 131300 S1, and a letter of opposition under my own letterhead. I'm past vice president of North Hills West Neighborhood Council, past land use chair, 39-year resident of the community, and a disabled veteran for 48 years, 48 years. The proposed emergency street safety and traffic improvement general obligation bond is another discriminatory tax that would add a minimum of $54 to $124 to every homeowner's property, and property owners' tax bill for the next 20 years, especially senior citizens who are already on the verge of being taxed out of their homes. Our community is composed of almost 90% single-family homes. The owners of these homes already, are already unfairly bear the burden of all taxes, fees, assessments, and bond issues. It is the property owners who eventually will have to shoulder the burden of the $6 billion tax tab. Note, we have already paid for street repair in our tax bills. Where did the money go? The core question is that of fiscal accountability and management competency on the part of this city government and past city governments. Until a real plan comes forward, nothing should be done. You need to look at your own internal management style and what can be saved. The city of Los Angeles continues to pass special bond issues and assessments that circumvent the intent of Proposition 13. No on the proposed $3 to $6 billion emergency street safety and traffic improvement general obligation bond. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Barry? Thank you for being here. Followed, our last speaker, Jeff Jacober. Barry, please.
Thank you for having us here in the valley. I'm a member of West Hills Neighborhood Council, Streets and Transportation Co-Chair, member of Valley Alliance Neighborhood Council.
Thanks for your service, sir.
Thank you, although I'm here on my own behalf. I feel that this entire bond going against the homeowners, we're the scapegoats, because we're the easy target, because the city of Los Angeles has so many renters, and it'll cost them next to nothing if they have a slight increase in their rent, and of course, the burden falls on us, the homeowners. I do feel, however, that there is a lot of money in LA. If the city of LA got rid of all the overpaid, highly-paid department heads, nobody in LA should make more money a year than the mayor. All these other people should be there, take a job, should take a pay cut, or be eliminated, because I'm sure there's many people under them who would like to step up and take the job. Yes, we do need something done with the streets, but it needs to be paid for a little bit differently. I've had several emails back and forth with Councilman Englander regarding this in the past, and I would like to invite both of you to our neighborhood council to discuss this. But I do feel that this should, as several people talked about before, this should be passed on to everybody that drives on the streets, including buses, trucks, vehicle registration. I checked with the state assembly, Mr. Bloomfeld's office, if this could be done, and what I heard back was, yes, the city just has to tell the state that, gee, X amount of dollars is going to be added to vehicle registration, it comes back to the city. Because several people in our neighborhood council thought it couldn't be done, I did ask, and it can be done. So, I think there are other ways to fund this, and I do feel that it should come from, some of it should come within the city, since it's been paid for, if the city got rid of the high-level paid fat that doesn't need to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff, good evening. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for sort of raising the issue and bringing the city's attention to the sort of sorry state of our infrastructure. I am chair of the city's Bicycle Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. I don't think this should be looked at strictly as a road repair measure, it should be looked as sort of like a transportation infrastructure improvement measure. And what I mean by that is, you know, we have a bike plan that calls for bicycle improvements throughout the city, and we shouldn't just be looking at just paving streets willy-nilly, but really, having a plan that would fund implementing the bike plan. Somebody mentioned earlier that, you know, the Planning Department is drafting a mobility element that's sort of looking at the future of our transportation infrastructure in the city, and it seems a little bit like this bond measure is premature. We should actually wait till we have an infrastructure plan in the mobility element, and then figure out how we're going to fund it, and what needs to be funded. The timings feels a little bit like, you know, ready, fire, aim. And I think you should wait, like I said, until we have a plan, and then fund the plan. I do want to add one word about funding sidewalks. I think the problem with any general property tax measure to fund sidewalks is there's lots of streets in this city that don't have sidewalks. I mean, my boyfriend's house doesn't have a sidewalk. Why should he pay property taxes to fix sidewalks in very affluent communities when we have a state law that talks about how people are supposed to pay for their sidewalks? And, you know, with respect to the expense, I mean, a properly-built sidewalk will last about 80 years. If you look at the annual cost of that to the average homeowner, I mean, it's absolutely minimal, and we shouldn't be forcing people who don't have sidewalks to pay for repairs of sidewalks for people to do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank all of our public speakers, and thank you for your questions, comments, concerns are all valuable here in the process as we move forward. I also want to thank the city staff, family, the city family, Zario, as well as Natalie and Mr. Jerry Miller, Capri Maddox, our board... and Mr. Jerry Miller, Capri Maddox, our board president for the Board of Public Works. This is just the first step of the process. We have a lot more work to do before we have this final proposal come before the city council and then to the voters. I'm going to ask Mr. Englander for some closing comments.
Great, thank you. And I want to thank the chairman as well, and I truly appreciate your leadership, Mr. Biscagiano, as chairman of Public Works. And I want to thank the community for coming out. You know, I'll be brief, but just to say, when we got together and talked about moving this forward and bringing this out publicly and going around to the, into all the different communities and stakeholders, we had an expectation that people would be concerned, to say the least, and probably rather upset when we talk about the idea that we want to raise any type of taxes, particularly as probably two of the most conservative members of the council and two of the newest members of the council. What we're looking for, and I want to thank those particularly that came out to offer ideas that asked questions for us to look into, which we will gather all that information as all those questions were being written down, all that information will be forthcoming. Some very good questions, some very good ideas. For those who simply came out to complain, you know, we looked, that's why we ran for office, not just to listen to complaints, but to work together, to look, to work together with you, to look for solutions, and not pass on the problem we inherited to our children and our grandchildren. This is a problem that we can stick our head in the sand, and it's not going away. And the numbers are going to continue to grow, and the dollar amounts are going to continue to grow. And so we agree with you, and we can point the finger to all kinds of other issues in the city, and we certainly have our fair share of issues that we've got to deal with every day. But I really want to thank you all for a couple of things. One, particularly those who came up with good questions and good ideas, because that's what this process is really all about. We're not wed to any one particular direction. But also, even for those who didn't and just are upset, period, with the direction perhaps of local government or all governments for that matter, for taking the time, though, out of your busy day to come down here, even to share a concern or a complaint with local government or any governments, because that's something that we live with and take the responsibility on our shoulders with every single day. And so we truly appreciate that you did take the time, no matter what your position, that you took the time out of your lives to come down here and share your thoughts, and, because we're all in this together, and this is all of our community. So, Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Englander, sorry. You butchered my last name. So what I'm going to do is hold both of these items in committee into our next special Public Works Committee meeting set for Tuesday, April 23rd. Audio of this meeting will be posted on the city's website, lacity.org. Thank you all for being here, and please stay tuned as we move forward. Thank you, sir.